Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is June the 20th, 2017 at 6:03. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council is regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Kathy Hooper with the Brazos Convenient Ministry to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Rose Meyer. All rise, please.
But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against such things there is no law. Galatians 5:22-23. Heavenly Father, I thank you for your goodness and mercy towards us. We invite your presence tonight in this place. We ask that you bring your attributes into this place, that our rulings be righteous and in line with your justice. Lord God, we thank you for how you have loved us and preserved us. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge and honor our Texas heart and American flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which we stand in, one nation under God, indivisible, should never be in justice for all. Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one in the good.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight to take away from your heat outside, I guess. We're going to lead off with a presentation on the programs available for aging and disability service through the North Central Texas Council of Government led by Donnie Green, the Director of Aging.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. My purpose is to give you a brief status report on services available through the North Central Texas Area Agency on Aging. Just to give you a li-- oh, thank you. I was looking for the magic clicker. So, our mission is to provide a comprehensive network of health and social services for people who are age 60 and over, as well as their family caregivers who live in a 14-county area, including Hood County. And we target specific high-risk populations that are identified by our enabling legislation, the Older Americans Act. Those populations include folks with low incomes, those who are socially isolated, who don't have support from family or friends, those who are frail, those who live in rural areas, older persons of color, and those who have limited English proficiency. All of the services that we provide through our office are provided at no charge. However, we do accept voluntary contributions which go right back to the programs under which those contributions are made. We are not allowed to turn people away because they have income that's too high. We don't have any income tests or asset tests. There are a couple of different ways that we provide services. One is through contracts. The other is on a direct basis. Our contract services include our nutrition services, and they really are the heart and soul of everything that we do. And we're delighted to partner with the Hood County Committee on Aging. Last year in our 14-county area, we helped fund over half a million home-delivered meals, by far the largest program that we administer, followed by the Congregate Meal Program, which are meals that are served at senior centers. We also fund demand-response transportation, which provides curb-to-curb assistance for trips that are scheduled in advance and within county boundaries. We also fund information referral and assistance to help connect people with federal, state, and local resources. We support money management services, as well as caregiver education and training. And I'll talk more about caregiver education and training in just a couple of minutes. So those are our major contract services. We also offer a number of direct services, which include benefits counseling. We have staff and volunteer benefits counselors who live for Medicare explanations of benefits and helping people figure out which Medicare drug program best meets their needs. We counsel people about benefits through the Veterans Administration, through the Medicaid program, help do those applications in many cases. We also have a couple of case management programs that work with older folks typically who are being discharged from the hospital, need some additional supports in order to remain safely in their homes. Through those programs, we can do things like build wheelchair ramps, widen bathroom doorways, purchase medical equipment that's not covered by insurance, provide a temporary supply of health-related goods and services, provide some in-home services, assistance with fixing a meal, cleaning the home. In addition, we also administer a long-term care on Budsman program that advocates for the rights of people who live in nursing facilities and assisted-living facilities. We also work with nursing home residents who wish to return to the community, and we arrange all of the community-based services, including housing, Medicaid services, in-home services, transportation, that are necessary for a successful transition. We also do a number of health education classes. We have classes to help people reduce the risk of falls, manage chronic disease, manage diabetes, and manage chronic pain. This is the contact information for our agency. I've also brought some brochures that I will distribute as soon as I conclude, and I've brought a few extras as well. In addition, we have a program that works with people of all ages who have disabilities. Until now, the programs that I've shared with you are restricted, in most cases, to people age 60 and over. But through our Aging and Disability Resource Center, we are able to work with children, with physical, mental, intellectual disabilities, young adults with disabilities, as well as older adults. The program is really designed to provide that linkage to other community resources. For most of the year, we don't have any funding that we can use to actually purchase services for folks with disabilities. But there is an exception that I'll talk about in just a minute. And that is our Aging and Disability Resource Center Summer Respite Program. We're very fortunate to have some funds available on a very short-term basis. They'll go away at the end of September. But we can provide relief to family caregivers, and they are issued vouchers that they can use to pay agencies, pay summer camps, friends, neighbors, church members, to care for their loved ones so that they can take a break. So we're really excited to have these funds available. We've seen a lot of demand, but we've got a nice little pot of money. We want to make sure that it's fully expended by the end of the summer. And so we really do welcome referrals from the local community for that program. I also wanted to mention that for a number of years, we have been contracting with the Alzheimer's Association of North Central Texas. And it has offered a wonderful program in just three counties, Terrent, Parker, Johnson, called REACH. REACH is a program that provides really intensive in-home education and support to caregivers of people with dementia. This is an issue that has touched me personally. My father passed away of dementia just a few weeks ago, and it really can impose a heavy toll on the entire family. And the Alzheimer's Association are really the go-to folks when it comes to helping people develop strategies to deal with the personality changes, with the loss of function that comes along with Alzheimer's. I'm really excited that the Alzheimer's Association is now making that program available to all of the counties on the western side of the region, including Hood, E-Rass, Somerville. So again, if you know of anyone who could benefit from that program, I brought some brochures. The Alzheimer's Association would welcome your referrals for that program. Here's the contact for our Aging and Disability Resource Center. I am officed in Arlington, which is where most of our regional services are based. But it's interesting, we have one satellite office in our 14-county area, and it's here in Granbury. So we have a staff person who drives down to Granbury on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and is available to talk with individuals with disabilities, family caregivers, those who want to plan in advance of disabilities. They are co-located with Pecan Valley MHMR, or Centers, Pecan Valley Centers. They've gone through a name change. So just a couple of challenges that we've been working through that unfortunately has had impact on Hood County Committee on Aging and our other nutrition transportation providers. Our federal funding has remained very flat. In fact, our current-year funding is a little bit lower than it was in fiscal year 2012. It comes as no surprise to you that the region, Hood County, other counties surrounding are growing very, very quickly. We're looking at an 80% increase in number of people age 60 and over in the next 10 years, and we're kind of fighting for scraps that fall from the table. So unfortunately, we're seeing a greater gap between the growing demand and the available funding. Another issue that we've had this year, it took so long for Congress to pass the budget that there were some lengthy delays in the funding. In fact, we just received our budget figure for the current fiscal year, which began October 1st last week. So the good news is that the funding came in a little bit higher than we projected. So we're going to get that out to our providers as quickly as we can. But it's really imposed a hardship for some of the smaller agencies that desperately need those federal funds in order to continue services. We've also got kind of a unique challenge with the Older Americans Act that limits our ability to spend our nutrition funds in the way that they're needed. About two-thirds of our nutrition funding is dedicated for congregate meals. What we see in our region is that there's three times greater demand for home-delivered meals. But unfortunately, we can't shift those funds from the Congregate Meal Program to the Home Delivered Meal Program in the way that we would prefer. We also see tremendous need for inter-county transportation. We allow our providers to make trips out of county, but we can't compel them to do that. Those trips are more costly than those in-region trips. And we're also seeing increasing cultural diversity. One of the populations that we're required to target are those people with limited English proficiency. I'll tell you, we subscribe to Language Line, and depending on the language, it can cost us up to $600 an hour to translate. And so that's a tremendous hardship for some of our providers who don't have the ability to hire multilingual staff and have to rely on these translation services in order to accommodate older adults who don't speak English. So with that, I will conclude my remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'm going to go ahead and distribute some brochures.
Counselors, any questions for Ms. Green? Chris, City Manager?
Ms. Green, we really appreciate what your organization does for our community, and this information is valuable. We are concerned about the upcoming budget and how it's going to affect our local seniors and our Meals on Wheels program and all these others that you mentioned today. If there's something you need from us in the future, would you please let us know as far as letters of support for programs? Our seniors need these services dramatically.
Absolutely. Yeah. And the lion's share of our funding does come from the federal government through the Administration for Community Living. The President's budget has not provided any details on funding for the Older Americans Act. He's proposed, I believe, an 18% reduction in health and human service programs, and the Older Americans Act would fall under that umbrella. So certainly, any advocacy with federal representatives would be helpful. At the very least, we would hope to avoid cuts. But level funding, again, is not going to be sufficient. I think we really need to look at advocacy to grow the pie. I think the other policy issue that really limits our effectiveness and our providers' effectiveness is that limitation on using nutrition funds in the way that they're needed. Some of our services are funded from a big pot of money. We can kind of pick and choose services. We can choose the funding priorities. For whatever reason, nutrition funding is, comes to us in silos, and it really does limit that local control and responsiveness to local needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns for Ms. Green? Thank you very much. At this time, the council move into the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda is, number one, the consider approving the city council meeting minutes of June 6, 2017, joint city council and Granbury ISD Board trustees meeting of June 6, 2017, regular meeting. Second one being considered adopting Resolution 17-11, authorizing participation in the Texas term Local Government Investment Pool. And the third one being considered adopting Resolution 1712, approving the City of Granbury investment policy. Counsel, you had an opportunity to look at these items over on your consent agenda. Are there any items on there you want to discuss or possibly remove off the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley. I've got a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. The first one being a public hearing and consider approving a private water well. Chris, I'm going to turn it over to staff. Mary, you want to--
Thank you. As you all are aware, we've got a restriction on private water wells located within the city and ETJ. There are some restrictions. There are certain circumstances that allow for permit to be processed and considered by the council, and we have one of those tonight. I'll turn it over to Rick and let him fill you in on the details.
Thank you, Mr. Coffin. Mayor, Councilmember David Cleveland, who resides at 795 Cleveland Road, is applying for a single-family water well on his property. His ordinance states that if there's not, we don't have anything within 1,000 feet, that they must apply for this. We don't have anything remotely close. In fact, the closest water mains that we've got are around the corner on Acton Highway over by Racetrack currently that we have, that they could tap onto. You can see the application that he get from us. It's also in our, it's in our ETJ. It's also in our CCN. It's a shallow well, 455 feet. It's plenty of distance from everything that we've asked for by ordinance. And the well driller's information is at the bottom of the page there. He's a licensed well driller in the area and does a good job. The cost is located at the top. Staff has approved all this for your approval. There's a letter from the well driller, Mr. Ardahl, and everything seems to be in order. I don't know if Mr. Cleveland's here tonight. I haven't seen him.
I don't think so.
Okay. But staff recommends approval of this permit, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this well? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there any discussion or any questions for Rick on this water well? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the private water well permit.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Myers.
Sir.
I've got a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Once again, thank you, Rick. Our next item is to, item number five, we will be receiving and discuss the quarterly report for the Visit Granbury Corporation given by Tree Sanders.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city manager. Again, it's a pleasure and an honor to be before you this evening. I have a few things I wanted to share with you. I'm not going to go over the quarterly report page by page like I typically do, because I have some other fun and interesting things I think that you'll enjoy. When I did prepare the quarterly report for you, I did want to make sure that you know that always, always, we keep in mind our core focus, which is to drive new and/or current visitor demand, enhance the visitor experience, and communicate DMO relevancy and viability. We always stay aware of our strategic goals. There's not a thing that we do that doesn't fall within our strategic goals, one through four. One being the marketing, then we have destination development, DMO advocacy, community relations, and then our admin. We recently undertook a program related to community relations during National Tour and Travel Week, which was the first full week of May. So we supplied to the Hood County News a full-page ad that talked about the impact of tourism in Hood County, and the impact of tourism in Granbury, and some of the initiatives that we have moving forward. We also took that opportunity to share with the public that we were having our first Phase One completion party from the sidewalk renovation project. So that was held during National Tour and Travel Week as well. We had a really good turnout for that, and we enjoyed all getting together to celebrate tourism in Granbury. We're always proud of the work we do with media and in media relations. We had a lofty goal for fiscal year 2017 to try and meet the goal of $1 million in editorial coverage. So I'm happy to announce that at the end of the two quarters, we have $1,551,796 as the media value. We've done very, very well on this initiative this year. You can see the breakdown as to where, some of the numbers and where they fall. We also worked with a renovation project to provide a parking map. We had the map designed, and then we also, can you see? Then we also provided it to the city, to Bethany, so she could put it on your website, gave it to the Chamber for theirs, and to HGMA for their website as well. This is the second year that we provided some media assistance to the Granbury Wine Walk. It's one of our premier events that we host in Granbury. It's a successful one. It's year eight. So we assign our PR and communications person to work with the Wine Walk Committee for not only the VIP event, but for the Wine Walk in general. So this year, with everything that we had together, I mean, we had Today with Candace, we had Dallas Culture Map, we had at least three broadcast opportunities that she scheduled. So the media value resulting from our investment this year was $19,250. We've also done, are working on currently, a research project for those who attended the Wine Walk. And we're trying to get the analysis of their economic impact to Granbury and Hood County during that stay. We should have that in another few weeks, I think. But it's going to be really important and informational for us to know just how much that event generates. I wanted to share with you just a little bit about our current funding situation. I just wanted to share with you how proud we are that the current partnership we have with the city at a 90% hot budget allocation has generated well for us so far this year. The city council allocated $50,000 from the general fund for projects and programs that we cannot use hot funds for, the hotel occupancy tax. I'm happy to say we paid back $49,782.81 of the $50,000. According to my projections of what we did last year, you'll probably, we'll generate for you another $32,649. So that'll be an $82,432 return to you. So you'll get back not only the $50,000, but another $33,000 roughly for that particular project. We're trending well. Right now, we're about 10% in HOT collections over this same timeframe last year. I'm anticipating, that was my plan and my projection at this time last year, that it would be about 12%, and I think we'll make that with absolutely no problem. So we're doing well in that department. I wanted to share with you some major initiatives that we have. I shared with you before that we're doing two major things this fiscal year. One was developing a really high-level, high-quality, highly-interactive destination website that holds not e, not just a marketing website, but holds all of our visitor data, visitor databases, sales information, and so forth. In addition to that, and also in companion, is a branding initiative. So to do the destination website, we also needed to do a branding initiative. And when we do that, it's more than just a logo. It's more than a slogan. It's about what is the core essence of the brand for destinations and for Granbury. And I have a little video that might help explain that.
Who is Granbury? Are we our Texas history? Are we the embodiment of the General Granbury spirit? Are we the city that boasts the Granbury Opera House performances? Are we the quintessential Texas historic downtown and courthouse square? We've been many things and are becoming known for more. A family-friendly, affordable-edge city to DFW? A burgeoning arts, cultural heritage, and foodie destination? Blessed with Lake Granbury, Comanche Peak, and the Brazos River? Boating, fishing, swimming, and water sports at our doorstep? Home to wide-open ranges and beautiful sunsets? A perfect balance of city and rural settings and lively pursuits? So how do we define Granbury to the rest of the world? When you hear "what happens here stays here," you immediately think of Vegas, the adult playground where people live everyday identities to walk on the wild side. That emotional connection and sense of promise is called a brand. So what is Granbury's brand, our DNA? What is our unique promise? Even those of us who live and work here lack that shared understanding about who we are and what we promise. We're somewhat like a chef without a signature dish. Finding that shared identity or brand will help us market our city and area, attract visitors, new residents, new businesses, and jobs, and retain our young talent. And that's where you come in. Who can tell Granbury's story better than the people who live it every day? This is our opportunity to come together as a community and collectively define our brand for generations to come. We are inviting you to participate in the creation of the Granbury brand, the unique promise we make to the world about who we are, what we do, and the place we call home. We are inviting you to help us discover, who is Granbury?
Thank you. We used this video to kind of set the stage, or get some enthusiasm going, for when we're getting ready to launch the branding initiative. But part of the initiative was a lot of work, so we had to do research. We couldn't just say, oh, we're Granbury, we're great, whatever. We had to know some specific information. So some of the key things that we wanted to find out about were the difference between day visitors and overnight visitors. We also wanted to know how many times folks had visited to Granbury in the last three years. So you can see the research analysis for that. During their last visit to Granbury, which activities, events, or services did they participate in? So we know that information. We know the extent to which of the following statements describes Granbury as a community or a visitor destination. We took all that into account. We wanted to know their preferences on how they obtain information on Granbury. We're happy to say the Visit Granbury website ranked number one. So another reason for us to make the major investment, we are in the new website, because it's so, it's so important. That was to visitors, and the same thing-- That was to visitors, and the same thing for potential visitors, because we interviewed them both. We wanted to find out how important they felt that the following things were, because we wanted to find out what the functional elements and the emotional elements are. So when you think of functional elements, you think of our amenities. You think of the lake, you think of the square, you think of our eateries, you think of theater and things like that. Those are functional things. Those are brick-and-mortar foundational things. When you think of the emotional elements, you want to find out how they feel. What are the words that they use? What are the emotions that they feel, and how do they describe those emotions? So we were able to, this is just a small slice of the research that we got, and we were able to get a lot of information. We then, the board of directors, met with and heard presentations from three companies that have brand experience, and they chose one. And we're happy to say that we've made it through the project. They did come back with us. We had some major objectives that we wanted them to accomplish, and these are some of their words. "One, to flatten the path from DFW to Granbury. Two, encourage visitors not to just stay for the day, but rather extend their visit." I'm not gonna read everything for you. "We wanted to reinforce just how much there is to do, see, and eat, drink, and Granbury, and the surrounding area. And four, to restore Granbury's image to match the restoration the town square and the rest of the city has undergone." When you have a brand, you also have a brand promise. And we do indeed have a brand promise. You know, our brand promise, I'm just gonna read the first sentence, is, "Granbury is the quintessential, small, rural North Texas community with a difference. It's an exciting, family-friendly leisure getaway, a relaxing retirement and commuter haven, and a desirable business location, all within easy reach to the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex." And the brand promise goes on and on. So as we develop this brand, everything we developed, or our partners helped us to develop, then mirrors the brand promise that we have for ourselves. In doing the branding, it's more than, like I said, it's more than a slogan, it's more than a logo, but it's a brand voice and tone. So we used some of the research to come up with what is our brand voice and tone. And you can see here, it's friendly, welcoming, comfortable, inviting, intriguing, candid, matter-of-fact, that's, that says Granbury, and very straightforward. Some of the many, many things I love about this community. And we also were able to define the key attributes: historic, accessible, refreshing, cowboy, but Texan, but not cowboy, family-friendly, artistic, welcoming, on and on and on it goes. So we were able to take all of that information, and they came up with some messaging pillars for us that we were really impressed by. And the first one is, "We've undergone a transformation. Long known for celebrating its past, Granbury is now much more focused on the present, and everything our town has to offer in the here and now." Great messaging, we believe. Another messaging pillar, "We are rejuvenating. Despite our location just outside the Metroplex, Granbury exhibits none of its stigmas or stresses. Our air is fresh, our streets are traffic-free, well, mostly, and the stars above us shine brightly at night. Time spent here cleanses the spirit and restores your energy." And lastly, "We are welcoming," and this is, to me, the one of the most important ones. "Granbury may stand apart from the Metroplex, but we are most certainly not standoffish. Our residents are eager to please and quick to assist visitors who find their way to our little town. We are not just happy you're here, we're excited to show you why we love it so much." We had some, uh, they, they were fabulous at their copywriting, and I'm just gonna read just a little bit. We have three beautifully-written copy examples. First, "Some places you go, you know what you're getting. You appreciate it for what it is, but that's all it is. There are no surprises. Some places, though, aren't quite so expected. No matter your expectations, they're always surpassed. A quaint square turns out to be a shopper's dream. A picturesque lake is actually a launching pad of excitement. A historic opera house plays host to contemporary theater. So much to do within a walking distance, so much more worth a short drive. It's a place where everywhere you turn, everything is simply greater than you ever imagined." I get goosebumps when I read this. I just love the way they write. And so these are examples of copy and content that we can use in our marketing initiatives Here's another one. "Why does it seem like all the best places to go require a long way? Travel destinations that turn out to be too long on travel and too short on destination. Is that the price you have to pay for a place that has everything you want? No, it's not. There's actually a place nearby with amazing foods to taste, beautiful views to gaze upon, and exciting activities to explore. A place where you're welcomed in and served up their best. A place where you'll love going to bed at night but can't wait to get up. A place that is both far enough away and not far at all. A place that seems almost too good to be true, but it's not." We have one more. "Life challenges us sometimes. The day in and the day out can leave us tired, focused only on where we've been as opposed to looking forward to where we can go. The same is true of places. Places that seem as though they've seen better days and can't seem to stop reliving them. There is a place with a past that is just as focused on what lies ahead. A place that took a deep breath, restored itself, not only to its former glory, but also to a greater future, and the effect is so astonishing that it can restore you Granbury, restore yourself. This was our choice out of the messaging pillars, even though we can use all the content and all the copy that I read to you previously. Now, going to a logo. Doing a logo is difficult. Doing a logo that everyone will agree upon is impossible. But my board of directors are stellar, and we, we didn't have much time to do this because our website project was virtually on hold until we got this project completed. So we came back with some logo concepts. They hashed it out in a half a day, and this is what we're using. Not everyone agreed. Some people don't like orange, some people don't like blue, some don't like yellow, some don't like green. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. But this is the one we chose, and this is the one that we'll be using going forward. And there are a variety of examples for that. We also chose a color palette. The color palette's based on colors we found within the scenery of Granbury and the surrounding area. So the design folks were able to look like, at a photograph, like the background of the one that you see here, and you see all these colors in it. And if you look at some of the most spectacular sunsets and sunrises that I have ever seen, you'll find all these colors in it as well. So this is the color palette. So anything that we do moving forward, anything that we do at all, is gonna be centered around this particular color palette, so we have some great consistency. This, you can see what it might look like if we were to use the logo and the colors on a potential full-page ad, say, in a magazine. This is what it could possibly look like as a homepage of our website. This is what it could look like for social media, for Facebook. And here's, you kinda see everything all along. This is what it could look like on the sign out there, coming into Granbury, if you wanted to change that. And this is what it could look like on t-shirts, doing a full color and a single color. So this is what we're using, this is what we're using moving forward. We do have, um, from them, some, a brand guidelines book, and I have a copy for each of you. I'll put it in your mailboxes in the next few days, and take this and, and take a look at it. There's some beautiful imagery. It's how we're gonna use the color palette, it's how we're gonna use our typography, and it's, uh, identifies different graphic elements that we might use in doing some marketing and advertising moving forward, and some of the examples of the photographs that we're gonna use moving forward. And this is what I have, it's a lot to put into a short presentation, but this is what I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Teresa. You could've had really bad charts, and after that, our last part of that presentation, I wouldn't have known what you had on the charts.
That was my pleasure.
All the good things you said about Granbury, all, that's great.
Hey, I love Granbury. Granbury's fabulous.
And I also noticed on that, the picture, it's got the wavy lines, I guess that indicates the lake and all that.
Does.
There in the bottom of it, so, that looks great.
All those subtle elements that come together to, to make the whole, yeah. Brings in the lake.
Who was the voice behind that, behind that video? That was a great voice.
You know, I know. It's, it's so great. When I was working with the company to do the editing, they sent me four different clips of voices. They sent me this one as an Asian fellow, nothing against Asian, but it just didn't seem to fit. And you can pick the voice. And so, I don't know who he is. It cost $19.95 for him to read all of that, and I thought that was a pretty good price.
Great.
And he's a, he was, became our voice of Granbury for this particular video.
How'd it go?
Wanted somebody to sound a little southern without being east of the Mississippi Southern.
He nailed it, he nailed it. Council, you got any questions or concerns for Teresa up there? Great job.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Gary, you got one?
I got a few things, yeah.
Mr. Couch got something? Teresa? Don't run off there.
All right.
They're a little slow today.
Thank you, Teresa. Highly, highly professional.
Thank you.
And I, I had a text via the video stream, live stream, and, um, a gentleman that's been here for his whole life says, "This lady seems to do a good job." I would totally agree.
Thank you whoever sent that text. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's, I want to do a good job for you. I enjoy Granbury, and I enjoy working for you all and for the community.
Chris has got something he wants to add.
Yes, Chris.
Is that falling star a Photoshop, or is that for real?
I don't know.
It looks awesome.
We'll just enjoy it for what it is.
It's great.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilman Myers?
Down here. Teresa, I just wanna, I just always want to thank you for everything you do and your commitment to this community. And who would ever thought that we could be so successful in our second year? And I say "we" because every bit of experience, leadership, and commitment that you've given to this community has really propelled this, this position for you, and I'm just so happy for you and Dawn, and, and love the fact that you can call Granbury your home someday, hopefully.
Hopefully.
But, um, thank you again for your commitment in just everything that you do for this community. I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. You know, I've gone and done similar work in lots of communities, but I never thought I would find one that I thought I would want to stay. I would go, I'd be like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't wait till this year's over," or this two years, or three, or whatever it ended up being. I was always ready to go home. But this is the place I feel like I could call my home. So we'll see how it works out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa.
Mayor, I'm, I'm through with Teresa, but I want to say thank you to a, a council lady. I won't call her name yet, but, uh, she caught a lot of slack whenever this thing started about two or three years ago, from me included. And, uh, but, uh, I thank her for sending a vision, carrying it on out to get it done. You picked a great lady, your board did, when you were connected and Chris was on the board. I think we brought her on. But, uh, you know, sometimes we're sitting up here and we think, "Boy, we can, we can see everything." The way of the old saying is, "I seen that before before in her nose, but I didn't see the splinter on mine." And she did a great job, and thank you, Rose, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dallas. Next floor, we've got another report. We're gonna receive and discuss a status report from Ms. Julia Pennell pertaining to the Memorial Lane project.
Has Teresa left yet? Oh, you, you can have a new brand soon. As of July the first, part of the brand can be the only park in the United States that houses a Memorial Lane. The only one. The only one. I thought that was you, Chris, doing that voice. I sound a lot, lot like you. Uh, this will be our last report before the dedication, and we'll do a financial roundup in August. But I wanted Erin to come and bring you up to date with the physical part, and then I'll end it with the financial part.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, thanks for the opportunity. Just to give you a brief update on, like Julia has said, the, the construction aspect of the memorial site. Memorial monument frames and archways that were built by A&amp;A Welding and painted by Diamond C. have been installed. The law enforcement stones have been installed into the framework, and that was a team effort with A&amp;A Welding and city crews. Scott Tucker, last Thursday, I believe, completed the, uh, the concrete construction, so all the flat work has been completed. We have most of the brick pavers in, uh, in our possession now, and tomorrow morning we will be picking up the ones that have been completed with the names on them. So this coming Saturday, we'll have over a thousand bricks to install. So if anyone's aboard, just come on out to the site. We're having a work day. G&amp;G has started the, the landscape lighting installation. They should wrap up tomorrow, hopefully. All seven flagpoles have been installed at the site. Stone Creations is currently working on the, uh, the stone columns on the archways. And we have finished our rock wall to preserve a large pecan tree in this, on the site. And what we have not completed yet, but will be working on this week and next, is the landscaping, so the stone edging, drip irrigation, plant installation, bed prep, mulch. We have all the fence material at the warehouse that was donated, and we will start, hopefully at the end of this week, constructing that fence. We have monuments to install, benches to place. The sod is scheduled for next Wednesday to install six pallets of sod, and then major cleanup. So we're, we're working towards it. We've gotten to the point to where we were kind of on top of one another on the job site. It's pretty tight, so, um, today about noon, we kind of pulled off, let G&amp;G get completed, and then as soon as they're done, or we'll actually step in and help them cover some trenches up, come in right behind them, and get started on the fence and the, and the landscaping. So that's the update for that destruction site. Anybody have any questions, worries, concerns?
Thank you, Erin.
Advice?
Council, you got any questions for Erin on what he's presented? Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what I've learned in the last several days, been over at the site all day, that we ladies, when we were at 76, we don't sweat, we glisten. So, so you do that. But it's very exciting. We do have a workday this Saturday starting at 8 o'clock, so if any of you would like to come over, we have volunteers from Walmart, from our committee. And speaking of which, those that are on the committee, would you raise your hands, that are in attendance tonight? J.C. and Con and them. Thank these people when you see them out and about, because what I'm fixing to tell you is pretty strong, I think. Because of the committee, as of today, we have righted $190,000 money that we've committed and collected. We have almost $90,000 in in-kind. So this project, when finished, and we are committed to spend every penny on this project, that, uh, we, it'll be over a quarter of a million dollars. It started out as 150, we thought, but with the generosity and the hard work of the committee and the success, and I'm gonna have to say, "God." Because, you know, you put him in a factor, and he can do things that I can't ever do. So the one example was last Monday, we were gonna install those stones, and the storm came rolling through, and I said, "God, give us till noon, just till noon." I was sitting over there, 12:02, the rain just started pouring. And Erin said, "You should've asked him for a little longer." And, "But, because we need longer." But he has really, uh, helped us through this. I do want to report that that is good. So what we, our goal is at the end, when we're finished, our goal is to have everything paid. And the city wrote one check, and that's for the commemorative coins, if you remember the beautiful commemorative coins. And our desire is to pay the city back, so that when you walk over there and you enjoy this beautiful, unique site, the citizens of this community will have paid every penny for that site. And I think that's a great accomplishment that the city, uh, people have that kind of commitment to this city, and that kind of commitment to our heroes. And I think that's very important. Another thing is, is that the dedication is July the first. You have your personal invitation up there. Please make copies of that. Please send it to, put it on your Facebook, put, send it to everybody you know. We're gonna have 200 chairs and some tents and some shade. We have, um, the governor still on hold. Brian Birdwell and Mel have stepped in, and they have, they have the state fire marshal come in, they have the top man in the law enforcement coming for me. Chris Adams, who has lived in Granbury for a very short time, he retired as the commander of the Strategic Air Command. He's gonna be one of our speakers. So we have a very moving dedication. So, we have a very moving dedication time set aside. You will need to park at the, is it the police training center now? Is that what it's called, Mayor? For the old museum?
Oh, the museum, yeah.
Is that there in the lot across the street? And if you can't walk the half a block, we have the shuttle running, because we're anticipating, and we hope, hundreds of people to come and see this. Come Saturday and work with us, along with the people that are working. And one thing we would like to request is that the city think long and hard about this. This is the type of thing that happens. Gary, do you remember when we were setting way back when designing brochures we set at that picnic table? And what did we talk about we wish could happen to a tree? That cottonwood tree that's over there that twice a year floods that area?
We wanted to get rid of it.
Wanted to get rid of it. But, we didn't have it in our budget, you know? Do we put in lights, or do we take down the cottonwood tree? Do we put in green benches that people help us pay for, or do we take down the cottonwood tree? Because of the success of the Red Hot Concert, and the mayor was awesome, because of that success, a family that came to that, connected with Doug, then connected with me, and they are paying A to Z to come over and take down that cottonwood tree, clean out all that north side, so they can mow it so behind the memorial scene. I cry too much about this. But, anyway, that's the way this community and people work, to know that now the cottonwood tree's not going to be there shedding stuff all over, and people can sit there. And so, I'm excited about that. So, what we would like to see, you consider strongly, is that every time we're over there, and I've been over there every hour of the day, kids play over there, starting about four till dark on the firefighter playground. People walk, people hike. Please consider that as a possibility for restrooms. I cannot tell you how many people go up and down there. So, put it in your budget, hopefully, consider it, so that that park can have a restroom, because it is going to be a destination. And so, the committee and the citizens are very happy to be able to present this to the community and the people of Hood County. So, we thank you. And come work with us Saturday. Bring your gloves and your old scrubbies and bottled water, and we will allow you to lay a brick.
Thank you, Ms. Julia. I will be on vacation, but I will be with you in thoughts and spirit and all that. But, I know it'll turn out wonderful. Thank you very much. Council, any thoughts or concerns for Julie on that?
Julie, just continued thanks for all you do on the behalf of the city. I really appreciate it.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Julia, we were in budget all day today. Today was our budget day. I just...
You got the wheels turning, I'm sure.
Well, those of us of age will experience that for sure. Thank you for what you do.
At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in the open session, and all the members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code and the courts with authority contained in the following section, Section 551, 071, consultation with the attorney, legal discussion regarding city charter procedures related to council official duties and council and city manager. We will return. The council has reconvened in the open session. There was no action taken in closed session. At this time, council, are there any other discussion items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a statement.
Councilman Parsons?
The city charter does not provide appropriate flexibility to deal with allegations of misconduct by members of the city council, including the mayor. Additionally, the city charter lacks clarity in certain areas as to when misconduct occurs and the manner in which allegations of misconduct or charter violations should be dealt with. While I believe, based on the mayor's own statement, that the mayor's actions constitute a violation of our charter, I would prefer not to take drastic action, such drastic action as removal from office. Rather, I would move that the city council set a special city council meeting to discuss in an open and transparent manner the roles and responsibilities of the city council in regards to their interaction with city staff, to include the drafting of a policy which dictates the parameters within which we, as a city council members, may operate, a process for the required public hearings for removal, and to provide alternative options for dealing with allegations of misconduct. Having said that, Mayor, I move that we approve a three percent raise for the city secretary retroactive to October 1, 2016.
Second, Mayor. We got a motion to approve the raise of the city secretary for October 2016?
Mr. Mayor, we've been advised by council that the raise that was given to the city secretary may have not been a legal action, and we are retroactive applying that raise. I call for the question.
Second motion. You got a second on that, or a motion? Do we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion, council? I want to enter into one discussion on that particular item there, and I do apologize that we hadn't set aside the council discussion on this particular raise, and hopefully, we won't be going through something like this again. But, I do apologize that we didn't have that back in the executive session and talk to the person informal and bring it out here as we are doing now. So, council, we are actually making this retroactive. Hopefully, we won't have to do it in that situation again. Any more discussion? All in favor of the retroactive raise for October 2016? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It is approved. Any more discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons?
I would like to make a motion that we ask the city manager to implement a policy that any raises that are granted to the four executive employees, that being the city manager, the city secretary, the municipal judge, and the city attorney, that any changes in salary or any changes in compensation regarding that person must be supported by a copy of the minutes of a city council meeting that approves such action.
I'm going to shorten that to a motion to implement a policy for the said employees raises. And we have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We'll allow the city manager to set, to put that policy together. Council, any more discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Through this process, it's been a very difficult one in the last couple of weeks, especially for our mayor and for our mayor pro tem, Mickey Parsons. But, through this process, we have realized that we have some real issues of ambiguous issues with the charter regarding conduct of the city council members, among other issues. I do have a motion, but before I make that motion, I want to say a few words. I know this man over here, and I know this man over here. What Mickey Parsons did, did out of absolute conviction for the preservation of the integrity of this council. I know to my core, he didn't do it for self-interest reasons. I also know the mayor, and I know that his decision for giving the raise to the city secretary was not malicious. I believe what he did, he felt he was solving a problem. So, I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Charles Zech to review the city charter, meet with the city council, and provide legal advice and counsel.
Here we have a motion to authorize, the city manager authorized to meet with Charles Zech? That's right, Zech?
Execute agreement.
To execute an agreement. That's it.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
And we have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, any more discussion on this motion?
Mayor.
Councilperson Myers?
I feel compelled to say the same thing about Mayor Pro Tem Mickey Parsons. As long as I've served on council, he has been a faithful servant of this city. And I don't feel compelled to keep this in the back room about how important he is to this council. I feel very compelled for the citizens of Granbury to know that he has the experience and the heart. He knows the rules, and it was a very difficult decision for him to do this. It was not malicious in any way, and it's something that this council can learn from and be better for. And I want to thank him for going out on this limb on his own and making the council better for our community in the future. Thank you.
Mayor, I might as well say something about my buddy over here.
Councilman Allen.
You know, a lot of people think Mickey and I are the same age, but he's a lot older than I am. So, I go to him all the time for advice on the council. And I'll ask him what happened a year ago, what happened three years ago, or ten years ago. He's always there for us, on any of us. I guarantee anybody at this table could ask Mickey Parsons about something happened, and he'd tell you the truth. I thank him for what he did. I know he didn't do it to become mayor. If he wanted to do that, he could run, or he can run in my seat, I don't care. But, Mickey is hard. If you cut him, it would be inside, it would be Granbury. And I hope and pray, and I hope she's listening, that Hood County News gets this straight. Everybody up here is for Mickey Parsons, as far as I can tell. Thank you.
Council, any more discussion on that? We do have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Charles Zech. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Council, any more discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
I would like to ask the city manager to close our meeting out tonight with prayer.
You've got a request to close the city meeting out with prayer? I think that's appropriate.
Heavenly Father, we just come to you with our hearts hungry for peace and healing, and we just know that you're the God that heals. You're the God that has blessed our community. We know that you've allowed these folks to be elected and to serve our community, because you put them in these places of authority, and you've asked them to do your work. And so, we just ask that your Spirit would be upon each one of them and myself, and cover us with your love and your peace and your joy. And I pray that you restore the joy of our salvation as we work together and we serve our community together. And we have heavy hearts now, but we know that joy's going to come in the morning. There's peace about what's going on in this meeting tonight, and we give you the glory for that. Father, I know that the world looks at us with piercing and convicting statements and thoughts, and I pray that you would turn those thoughts to positive, good things, and that as people make accusations out of speculation, that they would be convicted by your Spirit to understand what's true and what's real. And a lot of confusion has taken place in the last two weeks, and I thank you that you're not the author of confusion, that we come against the evil one. And we know that you want what's best for our community. And Father, I do thank you for people that are willing to stand up and do what's right and take care of business. And thank you for rules that we've got established and help us to make clear rules, and help us to do things for our community that will bring you glory and honor. And Father, we want to pray for continued prosperity in our community, and we want to do what you want us to do to solve these issues. Father, I pray for a spirit of forgiveness, and thank you for that. We know it only can come from you. We know that without your love, none of this communication tonight was possible. And we just ask that you bless us, strengthen us, and thank you for allowing us to go through something like this that makes us better. And we know that you're in control, and you're not surprised. And thank you for your sovereign grace and love for us. And I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Council, any more discussion? Very good meeting. This meeting is adjourned.